Good evening. We welcome you to tonight's debate sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County and the University of Scranton Center for Ethics and Excellence in Public Service. The center goes by the acronym KEAPS. My name is Joanna Hopper. I'm the Director of KEAPS and will be this evening's moderator. Before we begin, I'd like to share a few words about KEAPS and the League of Women Voters. The Center for Ethics and Excellence in Public Service is a nonpartisan organization at the University of Scranton that endeavors to promote the common good through programs that support the development of ethical and competent public officials and of civically knowledgeable, responsible, and engaged community members. KEAPS provides resources for students, governing officials, and community members seeking education, training, or opportunities related to public service. To find out more about KEAPS and upcoming events, please visit the KEAPS website.
Tonight's debate is being taped by ECTV and it will be shown on their schedule. So please check out Comcast 19 and look at their schedule for when it will be showed. It will also be shown on YouTube. A few procedural items for the audience. Please turn off and silence your cell phones or any other electronic devices. We also ask that you refrain from expressions of support, opposition, approval, or disapproval throughout the event. Hold your applause until after each candidate has given their closing statement. Then you may applaud. Anyone causing a disturbance may be asked to leave the room. Please be aware that it is our policy that no person, candidate, or political group is allowed to use or edit any media from League of Women Voters events or the Center for Ethics and Excellence in Public Policy, public service events. Any use of media requires the express written approval of the League and the Center. No excerpts or soundbites may be taken come tonight's discussion. Tonight's debate offers an opportunity for voters to learn about the candidates running in the Democratic primary for Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners so that the voters can make informed choices at the polls on May 16th. The questions that candidates will be asked were developed by the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County and the Center for Ethics and Excellence in Public Service. All candidates will be asked the same questions and they have not had the questions ahead of time. So I will introduce each candidate with a brief bio and the candidates then will answer their questions. They will have 90 seconds to answer each question. And they all get the same questions. They will have three opportunities for one-minute rebuttals if they so choose. Just need to ask moderator and we will give you your one-minute rebuttals. And then at the end, they will have two minutes for closing statements. Our timers have a 30 seconds. Blue sheet of paper to let you know when there's 30 seconds left and then stop. And when the stop comes up, we ask that you at least finish your sentence, but then don't continue on after that. So we drew lots at the beginning to see who would answer the first question first. I don't have that information. So who got number one for the first question first? Thank you, Michael. And then we also drew lots to see who would do their first closing statement. I will now introduce the candidates in alphabetical order. So Michael Fedorca is candidate for the Democratic nomination for the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners. He holds a degree with honors from Johnson College and was a graduate of Mid Valley High School. In public service, Mr. Fedorca has served in several roles, including as an officer of the Dixon City Zoning and Hearing Board and the Dixon City Planning Commission, a member of the Dixon City Borough Council with a partial term as Council President, and as the Dixon City Municipal Building Committee Chairman. In other civic service, Mr. Fedorca serves on the Board of Directors for St. Mary's Center and is active in both Little League and youth basketball in Dixon City. He is the owner and operator, operating officer of Fedorca Cabinetry, and he currently resides in Dixon City. I hope I did not mispronounce your name, your last name. Thank you. Bill Gahn was going to be with us this evening, but his wife is giving birth and therefore he is not able to join us. So I will go on to the next candidate. Matt McGloin is a candidate for the Democratic nomination for Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners. He holds a bachelor's degree in journalism from Penn State and is a graduate of West Scranton High School. Mr. McGloin's civic experience includes founding the Matt McGloin Foundation, which helps youth, veterans, and those in need in Northeast Pennsylvania, and his work supporting the Boys and Girls Club of Scranton, the Children's Advocacy Center he's also been involved with, and the Scranton Area Foundation, as well as Scranton Kiwanis Club. From 2013 to 2018, Mr. McGloin was a professional football player in the National Football League and a member of the NFL Players Association. He currently appears on Big Ten Network as a radio co-host and analyst. Mr. McGloin currently resides in Waverly. Next, we have Jerry Notariani, also a candidate for Democratic primary for County Commissioner. He attended Wilkes University in their county program and is a graduate of Scranton Central High School. Mr. Notariani is a current member of the Lackawanna County Commissioners. In other public service, he has served on the Lackawanna Government Study Commission as Register of Wills, as Democratic State Committee Member, and as the Chairman of 113th Legislative District. In civic service, Mr. Notariani served on the Scranton Zoning Board of Appeals, on the Board of Directors for Lackawanna County, I'm sorry, Lackawanna Humane Development Agency, and currently serves on the AVP by county board, airport board, Lackawanna County Prison Board, and the Agency for Community Empowerment of Northeast Pennsylvania, among other services. He is currently the owner and president of AIT Auto Parts and currently resides in Scranton. And at the far end of the table, we have Philip Robson.
It's Robson, please.
Robson?
Yes.
Robson, sorry. Thank you. Mr. Robson holds a bachelor's degree and master's degree in industrial engineering from Lehigh University and a master's in healthcare leadership from Brown University. Mr. Robson is currently a member of the Abington Heights School Board and his civic service includes service for St. Gregory's Church and Abington Heights, I'm sorry, and Abington Lions. He has worked for or works for Kaiser Health Systems, Mind Tech Accenture, and Lehigh University. Mr. Robson, did I say it right that time?
Yes.
Robson, thank you. Currently resides in South Abington. So welcome to all the candidates.
So we are going to get started with this evening's questions. And Mike, you drew first, so we'll start with you and then go on as we discussed. So we're going to start with sort of a basic question. What do you consider to be the greatest challenge facing Lackawanna County and how do you plan to address that challenge in your work as Commissioner?
Well, the basic Scranton challenge for not only Scranton or Lackawanna County or any of our municipalities is every year trying to make sure that we could keep up with the issues that come before us. As we've seen what happened three years ago when we were hit with COVID, Dixon City had many issues at that time where I believe I was the first in the county, from what I was told, where we actually shut down Dixon City in, I think it was March. That's when it hit everyone a little bit harder. It's always, again, something that you never expect, that you have to be prepared for. And I feel that everything that we've had happened to us. We were prepared, we deal with it, and we move forward.
Matt, same question?
Yeah, well, first off, I'd like to congratulate the Gohin family on welcoming into addition to their family. Family's the most important thing that we have in this life. So congratulations to Bill Gohin, his wife, and the rest of their family. I'd like to thank my beautiful wife, who is here tonight, for being here, for all her love and support. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight. I'd like to thank these candidates as well for putting their name on the ballot this year. Takes a lot of work and it takes a lot of courage, so congratulations, men. I think the biggest problem facing Lackawanna Counties today is economic development. Too often, over the past few months, I've had conversations with people who sit down at their dining room tables on Sundays, birthdays, holidays, and there's an empty chair there. And it's their son or their daughter or their grandson or their granddaughter who has since moved on for better opportunities outside the area. I think we're missing the bus here. There's a number of colleges and universities here in Lackawanna County or in the surrounding area. I think it's time we sit down with these presidents, these deans, and talk about and discuss issues on how to be able to attract and how to be able to keep our students here. How do we be able to develop programs to keep our students here? We must prioritize good jobs at good wages, which creates good healthcare. I have two young children, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. I hope as they grow that they have the opportunities here to be able to stay here and grow in the area. I also think we need to take a look at, you know, helping our youth and helping our students prepare for the jobs of the future, right? Taking a look at vocational trade, right? Technology, preparing them for that, right? Why not us? I think that's the question we need to ask ourselves moving forward.
Jerry, same question?
Okay. Economic development is an important part of what we do, but in order to do that, besides what we have done, is the quality of life has to be made better and our workforce development has to be made better. And we've been working on those things. The schools and the universities, we do work closely with. We still, we do, and we're being more aggressive with that. It's an ongoing operation. The university is a great partner, as are all the other schools. But the quality of life here is something that, that's the reason our children don't stay. It's not someplace where they want to be necessarily. As far as jobs, there are a lot of jobs in Lackawanna County. There are a lot of industry and a lot of activity. Our workforce isn't where it should be. And it's a workforce development board that we have revitalized and we're going to continue to do. And it's, but it is, it's an ongoing operation and we just continue to go forward. But I've already done those things. I understand what people are saying. My two kids are not living in the area now and I wish to God they'd come back, but that's the way it is and maybe someday, hopefully soon, they will. Thank you.
Yes, along the same lines of Matt and Jerry, workforce development is one of the biggest things that we have to deal with, but I look at it with a different caveat, and that is, when we look at the stats for where we rank in health outcomes, we're actually not very good. We're 52 out of 67, according to Niche Research. And that, I'm sort of puzzled by that because we have clean air, we have good parks and recreation, good family values, good culture, and that's a credit to Jerry. But also, why are we, why do we have health outcomes that are so low? We have great physicians, good healthcare systems, good access to care, I think, in Lackawanna County. And I think part of it, and we've already started doing this, is to launch a local health department where we could do a lot of the screening, a lot of the self-assessment ahead of time, and try to deal with some of the chronic disorders before they happen, such as COPD, diabetes, and obesity. So to answer your question, I think the biggest challenge is workforce development through the area of improving health outcomes because we have all the resources to do it.
Thank you. Our second question has to do with ethics. Approving contracts for the purchase of goods, real estate, and audits is an important job of the Board of Commissioners. How would you ensure that the consideration and approval of contracts is done ethically? Matt, this question will go to you first.
Yeah, well, I mean, the first thing I think of when you think of ethics is doing the right thing, right? Ensuring that, you know, whoever, you know, these contracts go out to are, you know, the right people, right? Making sure that, you know, we want to hire people that are going to do quality workforce here in Lackawanna County.
Jerry, same question for you.
Okay, thank you. Any contract over $24,000 is put out to bid. And we did recently enact a ROC program, Responsible Operating Contractors, a contract, ordinance, so that we could force, make sure that everything we did is done properly. It all goes to our law department. It's all done properly and it's a very, and it was actually an ethics ordinance that was enacted by Corey O'Brien and Jim Wancek, that was part of what the things we can do and can't do. And we do all of the right things currently and we will continue to do that. And it's, that's basically relatively simple. Thank you.
Phil?
And I think the, one of the important things around contracts, you know, I've been a contractor as a consultant for a long time, and segregation of duties is a big one. So the person writing the contract isn't the one who's actually approving it if it goes around to them. So I think segregation of duties, but it comes back to policies and procedures. Are they in place? And you can build ethics and defect-free operations into the process. So if you have good processes, I think you'll be able to handle the ethics question very easily. On the school board, we always have to, the first thing we do is look to put it out to bid and RFP it and let's see what they come back with. And that's worked pretty well. I think there's some challenges in the state because the state sort of forces us to look at the lowest bid and that might not be the best vendor. So there are some challenges, but in terms of ethics, I think it's built into the processes and the governance, similar to what Jerry referred to.
Mike, same question?
Yes, I deal with a lot of different, I wear a lot of different hats in Dixon City. Planning Commission Chairman for 23 years. I've been with the zoning and hearing board. I'm going for a board term with council. And of course, you have to deal with ethics. I mean, we're not only with council, we're legislating for the borough, we're making the laws. With the planning commission, over the past 23 years that I've been there, we have brought in over hundreds of millions of dollars in new jobs and, I'm sorry, in new businesses and many, many high-paying jobs into the area. If you just look from I-81, look at Exit 90, Exit 91, you'll see there's so much business going on. And I'm one of the people you'll see at that municipal building every day, making sure that everything is coming in. I'm the person that sees the paperwork. I'm the person that delegates, who gets that paperwork, and they make sure that everything is done the right way.
Thank you. The next question would be about election administration. Jerry, you'll answer this one first.
Okay.
County government election employees are on the front line of our democracy. In Pennsylvania, election officials have advocated for precanvassing of ballots since 2019, when Act 77 expanded the use of mail-in ballots. Do you support the proposal introduced in the Pennsylvania House that would give counties seven days to open, process, and tally mail ballots before Election Day? Please explain your answer.
I do, it would make it easier for a lot of counties, not necessarily actually at this point in Lackawanna. We have gotten our elections done efficiently and smoothly and cleanly for the past six elections, eight elections. There hasn't been a hiccup. We haven't had any issues. We have watchers from both political parties there all day long. We invested in equipment to make sure that we did it properly. We were ahead of the curve on that. You don't see the problems in Lackawanna County that you do see in other counties. It may help them in other counties to be able to open them prior to the time, but it's, to us, it's not an issue. We've never had a problem. We, you know, we have, our Republican Commissioner and I get along very well and he's right there and other people in this audience that have been there watching. There's no issues. And we just, we do a great job. And the woman that runs it should be commended as do all the employees. Thank you.
Phil, same question?
Yes, I do agree that it's really not an issue. I'm somewhat indifferent about it because it doesn't have an impact in Lackawanna County. I will say, the first time I ran in 2015, the people at the election office weren't as helpful as they are today. So they are very helpful. I don't see any problems with precanvassing. I don't think it's an issue here in Lackawanna County. I really don't.
Mike, same question?
I really don't see too many issues as I believe Bill said that. Years ago, there were changes in the system and when there were the changes in the system from different types of, the old machines from the 30s, and they were getting into more computerized, they did have a lot of issues because I also worked the polls, as a matter of fact, and, or was a watcher way back when and you could see different issues happening. You really do, everybody has to be on the same page. I think if you're using any type of voter system, the system should be the same throughout the state and that will eliminate any issues, any voter issues.
Matt, same question?
Yeah, look, I think the people that work at the polling locations do a tremendous job. I think voter registration does an incredible job. Mr. Terriani is right when he says we haven't had any problems here in Lackawanna County like you may have seen in other counties. You know, as county commissioner, I think it's important that we continue, right, to do the job the way it's been done and we'll make sure that it is fair and transparent.
Thank you. The next question has to do with budgeting. Phil, you'll answer this question first. Government officials like to have rainy day funds. Taxpayers want government officials to use their tax dollars efficiently, effectively, and transparently. How much money should Lackawanna County Government allow to accrue in surplus revenue in its rainy day fund before it takes action to ease the tax burdens of county residents?
Sure. Well, being responsible for the Abington Heights budget, which is around 55 million, and we see this across the board with school districts, you know, when you look at taking capital money and using it for operating expenses, you run into trouble. And so I do think there's value in having a safety fund. I mean, typically in business, when we do contracts, sometimes it's a contingency, whether it's management contingency or project contingency, around 10 to 12%. So that's not uncommon. But what I think, what we really need to do around that issue in particular is really be careful about where we're spending the money. I mean, so we can have a rainy day fund, I would say it's anywhere between 10 and 12%. But as long as we're spending capital dollars from the capital budget and the operating dollars from the operating budget, you know, having a rainy day fund shouldn't be an issue.
Thank you. Mike, same question?
Yeah, well, with rainy day funds, we really had one in Dixon City recently, about two years ago. Most of our storm sewers basically blew up on Dundav Street area where it took almost a year. The funding that we did receive, we received help locally and we received help through the state. Actually, I also work budgets, trying to work budgets and trying to get it right. It's so difficult because again, as I stated earlier, you never know what's going to happen. And when this happened, you know, I could, you could say, you could put 10% away or you could put 15% away, but you're never sure on the amount you're going to need, what the disaster is, and the only thing you could do is hope that it doesn't happen and have help with the other governmental bodies, which we also help.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, no, I agree with Mr. Robson, what he had to say. I think there is value in having, you know, some type of safety fund, knowing that there is, that is there for the rainy day, to potentially have that somewhere down the road, you know, to have that, you know, be there in the future and, you know, in case it's necessary or in case anything comes up moving forward.
I think, I don't think that...
If you want a rebuttal, will you wait until Jerry's finished with this and then I'll give you a rebuttal? Jerry, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. It's, we don't call it a rainy day fund, we call it an operating surplus. And it's necessary in order to secure your bond rating and make sure that stays positive. And it's supposed to be guided by the state, 10% of your total budget. So in Lackawanna County, it should be, instead of $14 million approximately. And that's what you basically do. It's an operating surplus. It's something that is necessary. And problems do arise when, what Mike was saying about the Dundav Street, I mean, the day after that happened, Chief Jeffers and I were up there first thing in the morning and it was, it was a disaster and I felt really sad for those people and we did help them. We helped them quite a bit, I believe. And we, you know, it's, but you don't know. Same thing when the pandemic came, we didn't know that was going to happen. We went and bought things prior to getting federal funds to reimburse ourselves. We bought laptops so people could have worked from home, so people would be safe. We bought protective devices. It's the nature of the world we live in these days and it's just what we do. We've already done those things, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like a one-minute rebuttal?
Yes, what I wanted to say with Mr. McGloin is there are monies that possibly should be set aside. It, yet again, depends on how your state, your local, and even your municipalities are set up. Not all of them are willing or able to be a part of this. So with the different amounts, the different types of disasters that could possibly happen, once again, it's not very easy, other than trying to work it out on a percentage-wise, as the Commissioner said originally.
All right, thank you. So the next question will be about economic development, and Mike, you'll go first for this question. Commissioners are expected to be involved with public and private sector officials on development projects that will enhance the county's business climate and create employment opportunities. What are your plans for improving the county's business climate and creating employment opportunities that provide living wages for county residents?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, that's something that, again, I have done a lot of work with Dixon City. We recently opened a new hospital, Lehigh Valley on Main Street. We are, as a matter of fact, today, I received two phone calls from Geisinger and Geisinger themselves have, I believe, they just bought out another healthcare system and they, unfortunately, I was not able to speak with them today. But we are also working on campus that they are getting ready in Dixon City for possibly five to six different units, and that would be up on Vumont Drive. We are also looking at large retail, commercial, and other facilities which will be up in the Belmont area with higher-income housing projects going in up there also. And I see I'm a little over, but we're working on a lot of projects. We're going to be continuing this year and hopefully we'll have some startups.
Thank you. Matt, same question?
Yeah, I think, I know you mentioned, you know, private sector individuals. I think private builders have done a really good job, you know? I think private builders have done a really good job, you know, over the past years or so in helping develop, you know, specifically in the downtown area. But I think we need to continue to work with the Chamber. You know, but, you know, as a county, we need to be able to do our job as well, too. We have to be able to promote our area, right? Pick up the phone, right? Call people, come to Lackawanna County, here's what we can offer you at Lackawanna County. We have to be able to go out and actively recruit businesses to come to our area so we can continue to create good jobs, we continue to be able to grow, you know, Lackawanna County. So, you know, we have good wages, we have good jobs, which creates good healthcare here in Lackawanna County.
Jerry, same question?
Okay, thank you. I think the reassessment will be a big boost to economic development here. And that's what I've been told repeatedly. And also, our relationship with the Chamber of Commerce is the best it's been in decades. We do work closely with them, and we do seek out businesses. And there is growth. If you go into the industrial parks in Jessup and Archibald and Dixon City, there's a lot of activity. That's why we need the workforce to be better. In Elephant, we did something with the Chamber to partner to fix a road problem that they had. But you couldn't do it without the help of the Chamber, and we couldn't do it without the help of Lackawanna County. And it was, you know, it was the way it went about doing it that made it better. The bus service to that particular plan, those plans pay good money anymore, $20 an hour and up. And that's important, but we, you know, we just keep, that's what we do every day. Our Economic Development Office does a phenomenal job, and we just keep going. That's all we do, we go to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil, same question?
Yes, so I think there's a lot of opportunities. I mean, the county is rich in resources. We have eight universities, having, working at Geisinger currently. You know, we always tap the Masters of Healthcare Administration here at University of Scranton for interns, so they can work with us and see how we do our business. I'm in IT specifically, and so, I always grab a couple interns to work with us. And a lot of times, it sometimes ends up in being a job. But if you go to the mall, you know, where Crunch Fitness is, you know, there's a lot of healthcare in there. And, you know, we have an aging population, and that's where a lot of the good, skilled, high-paying jobs are. I mean, Geisinger just opened up a, or soon to open up a facility in Dixon City. So, I think there's a lot of opportunity, and it's rich with resources here. We have eight universities, and we do a lot of work. When I say we, where I work in Geisinger, we do work with a lot of interns, and we get them out in the real working world. So, I think, you know, there's a need for good healthcare folks, especially since the pandemic. There's a lot of provider turnover and exhaustion, quite frankly. So, I think healthcare is a great area where you can partner with private and government.
Thank you. The next question will deal with the Lackawanna prison. And Matt, you'll go first for this question. Last year, several thousand Lackawanna County voters signed a petition to limit solitary confinement at Lackawanna prison to only emergency situations and for no more than 20 hours per day. The petition also stated that any use of solitary confinement must be reported publicly to the board. Would you support these changes? Please explain your answer.
Our prison is a, it's a tremendous expense. I think the warden does a really good job. You know, the prison accounts for, you know, roughly 20, a little over 20% of our budget north of $30 million. You know, I believe the prison must have more oversight. You know, and it's, look, I look forward to being able to work, you know, with the prison board. You know, I think when it comes to the prison, taking a look at some type of workforce or work-release-type program could be a good thing, especially for the municipalities here that need some help.
Jerry, same question?
We've done that already with a lot of those things, with the prison board. We've made it a point to transfer the power in hiring and firing people to the warden, to the people that actually run the prison, the prison board does that. It's not something, there's a legal argument, whether it's the prison board's authority has the right to do what they, you know, but that's another issue. But Jim Gibbons, his great job as the chairman of the prison board, Mark Powell is on the prison board, Martin McCandrew. It's just going, it is going in the right direction. It took a while, there's no question, but we're doing that. And we're doing it well, and we're going in the right direction with it. Prison is very expensive, and it's probably a little more than the 20% that Matt said. It's, but as far as the solitary confinement question, there's no such thing as solitary confinement. And you've got to remember one thing, it's not a church. There's a reason. And what are you going to do to somebody that's not going to do what they should do?
Thank you. Phil, same question?
Because the question is, am I for limiting? I want to make sure I answer correctly.
Correct, yes, and I can repeat it for you.
Could you?
If you would like. Yes, so the question is about the petition that was signed by a few thousand Lackawanna County voters last year to limit solitary confinement. And the limitations would be for only emergency situations and for no more than 20 hours a day. And also, that any use of solitary confinement would be reported publicly to the board. So, that's what was listed on the petition.
I'm in full support of that. Solitary confinement is cruel and unusual.
Mike, same question?
I'd be honest with you on something like that. Once again, I'm for committees sitting down, getting together. You do have your commissioners and the warden who would be involved, of course, with all of this. And you're here because of the people. The people, if the people signed petitions, there's also a voice, another voice there that could be heard. And I think you have to combine all of them together.
Thank you. The next question will be about public health and safety. Jerry, you'll answer this question first.
Okay.
County commissioners are responsible for public safety. What policies or programs would you advocate for to improve public safety throughout the county?
Well, we just created the Health Department, which was, you know, really brought to light during the course of the pandemic. But it was something that was necessary anyhow. People would say there's, you know, the state has a Department of Health. Yeah and no, and that takes up like 10 counties in northeastern Pennsylvania. When the pandemic came, we could not get any assistance from any of the hospital systems because they were overworked, overloaded. We, our county, our human services people, and our chief of staff, and us, we went to work every day, and we were able to partner with the pharmacies and get everyone vaccinated. Of the 67 counties, 19 most populated, we're number one. It's impossible, but we were. The state was helpful, but not much. And then, when we were at an event at the John Mitchell statue, the governor of Tom Wolf made the mistake of asking me what I needed. And I said $5 million, and he gave us four, through the help of our state reps and our state senator. So, and we were able to purchase a building that we're going to do a great job with. It'll be open and it'll be in the best interest of northeastern Pennsylvania, but particularly Lackawanna County. Thank you.
Phil, same question?
Yes, so I think, I'm in healthcare, and the one thing is, it's very complex. But there's also something else that is true, and that is, whatever we do, we have to keep four things in mind. It's called the quadruple aim of healthcare. You have to have good access, accessible to people that need it. It has to be good quality, and not just for individuals, but also population health outcomes. And it has to cost-continue. So, if you do two of those things and not the other, things are, they don't get better. And then, the fourth one is physician burnout. I think, though, having a local health department, to Jerry's point, is going in the right direction. Because I think what a local health department does, it allows you to take cost out of the provider's room because we have the ability to do a lot of the screening and the assessments and leave the physician's room for actual treatment. And they've done studies, and they say that it could be upwards of three hours a day if we did assessment and screening prior to the patient going into the room. So, it is very valuable having a local health department. I wrote about this in a paper in a health administration class, Dr. Sladowski, before the pandemic. And really, when you have a pandemic, that really shows that, to Jerry's point, you have to get resources out and have to have a local governing body that has the authority to do that. And that's what a local health department does.
Thank you. Mike, same question?
Yes, well, I believe you need a lot of outreach, no matter what you're going through. You need help from your local hospitals, you need help with the EMS. You need help all around. Because when something like that is happening, and it's something that I've never seen in my lifetime, the whole area needed to get together. And the county, as I said before, I was in touch with the county also. And the commission did a great job.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, I believe in healthier Lackawanna County. You know, the health department is a good idea. The only question I had for it is, was that space necessary? The idea was to be able to consolidate everybody under one roof at the county government center. You know, what we've done is taken a building off of the tax rule. You know, I understand that the state is funding 80% of it, but that's still taxpayer dollars. I just think we need some more transparency, and, you know, that's the only thing I question. Was that space necessary?
Do you like a rebuttal?
I think it absolutely was necessary. There's no question about it, the Globe Store or the government center, whatever it is, there's not enough room in it, was never planned for expansion. There was never any concept of it at the time. And it's got to be separate and accessible. That's the reason for that building. The other part of that building is, you know, it's, the Globe Store is still full, by the way. But the other part of it is that we, we're going to be able to put the tax office in there. The single tax office on the second floor of the Globe Store is a disaster. People have to come in there, they can't park anywhere. This way, there'll be a drive-through, they can pay their taxes and continue on. If you go on the second floor, there'll be people all over the place waiting to pay their taxes. It's absolutely horrendous. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just another point to this, because the other benefit that hasn't been mentioned about a local health department is data collection and monitoring. So, it is very important, especially with the technology we have today, with machine learning, AI, neural nets. A small, local health department can actually make better decisions based on insights from technology. And so, a good example is epidemiological data, like surveillance of incidence of diseases, new cases and prevalence, existing cases, is a huge factor in figuring out where to apply scarce resources. And that's another advantage of the local health department, if we go down that route.
Thank you. The next question deals with budgeting, and Phil, you'll answer this one first. Lackawanna County is expected to receive $9.7 million over 18 years from a historic legal settlement that resolved claims against opioid companies. Last month, the Lackawanna County Commissioners approved an ordinance establishing an opioid settlement fund committee. Please share some ideas you have for how Lackawanna County should spend its opioid settlement funds.
This is a great question, and in terms of what a local health department can do, dealing with the opioid crisis is one of them. And I think there's three areas where the department can focus on. One is prevention, obviously, that's the first step, we want to stop the bleeding before it even starts. But also referrals for treatment. So, you have prevention, and you have treatment. And the third is long-term recovery. And I think if you have those three things, that's a good equation for good health outcomes in a really terrible, terrible epidemic that's going on. Because we all know someone who suffers from opioid addiction. And those are the three things we can do, prevention, treatment, long-term recovery.
Thank you, Phil. Mike, same question?
Well, I think we also know people who are suffering from a lot of issues that may not be opioid addiction per se as in use of illegal drugs, but regular prescription drugs. And where are the issues? Who's handling these issues? Where's the health departments with this?
Thank you. Matt, same question?
Yeah, similar to what Mr. Robson had said. I think you take a look and you invest into recovery programs for people who, you know, at one point in time, you know, have dealt with issues, you know, making sure that they are getting the things that they need to continue down the path of recovery.
But again, who's helping out?
Would you like a rebuttal? Will you wait until?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, just let, I'm going to let Jerry go, and then you can go.
It's what Mr. Robson said, that's basically it. Commissioner Cummings, who's in the audience, was a spearhead in us doing that. I did that, I was a part of it, to initiate that Lackawanna County part of the lawsuit. We will get $18 million over, $19 million over 18 years. We created a panel of the district attorney, judges, the commissioners, healthcare people involved, that we deal with that, to try to, that we are going to focus where that money does go. Education, remediation, treatment, and that's basically what we have to do, and stop it. My back is killing me, by the way, and I don't, won't take anything like that because that's life. But it's part of, but that's what, we stopped the physicians from giving those drugs out like they did. And I think Commissioner Cummings should be lauded for that. She did a great job.
Mike, would you like a one-minute rebuttal?
Well, as I said, there are many people, if, maybe my colleagues here have been out campaigning. I've been campaigning for many years. And when you knock on someone's door and they ask you a question about something like this, and you're a layperson in many respects, and how do you answer them? When you're not in the health field and they want to know, how come there's issues that they can't get anything that's helping them with chronic pain?
Thank you. Our last question this evening will be about budgeting. Mike, you will answer this question first. Salary increases included in the new four-year contracts agreed to by the county government and three unions will increase budget expenditures by more than $1.95 million by 2026. The contracts include annual salary increases from 1% to 4.5% for full-time employees, and for the first time, longevity pay for full-time employees. The unionized employees will be required to pay more for health insurance, including prescription co-pays. In your opinion, are these contracts fair for all sides? The unionized employees, the people served by these public servants, and the county taxpayers?
Well, I dealt with probably seven to eight budgets every year when I was with Dixon City Council. And dealing with that, there's only, there's so much you could do, of course. There's so much money you have to work with, and there's not a heck of a lot of choices you have when you're dealing with these situations. To say if it's fair or not, it isn't. You just, you do what you can with what you have. Because the only other... Because the only other choices you do have are raising taxes. And raising taxes, a lot of people can't handle it. A lot of people and the elderly can. So the, the only thing I would say is you try to always keep your eye on the books and see where everything is going. And try to do the best you can because there are other monies available throughout, as I said earlier, throughout the other governments, your local government, your county government and the state.
Thank you. Matt, same question.
I mean, yeah, when it comes to salaries and raising salaries, I mean, you want to be able to keep good quality people around you every single day. You want people to be in their jobs for, for long-term, you want to be able to see people grow, you know, in those jobs, you know, they, this, this, you run into this problem at, at the 911 center. You know, in some cases, people are trained and then, and then they leave, you know, those jobs for better jobs. So, you know, again, I think it's important, you want good quality workers there who are compensated fairly for the job that they do.
Thank you. Jerry, same question.
Yeah, what Matt just said is, is accurate with the 911 center. That's a national and a statewide problem. It's not a Lackawanna County problem. We don't pay them enough. When we, Lackawanna County gave them a raise, the union grieved us. As far as the original question, and, and we were able to win that grievance, by the way, and that we were able to pay them more. As far as the, the, the contracts, yes, if we went to arbitration because of inflation, because of the way life is, we would have ended up with a better, a worse contract for Lackawanna County residents. It was not, they were happy, we were happy, contracts over. We do a good job. Our human services department, it's, it's, they do, they know what they're doing. Joanne Granza runs it. She, they, they're very good at it, our, our legal people. It, it's, it's something that we're, you know, we're, we're very proud of, actually. And we, we were able to, to get those contracts done. If you remember the Scranton Times, they before, school district did something similar and theirs was not as good a deal as ours was. And they got a headline that said, "Contract stability, labor stability." We got a headline, "County's paying union people more." Yeah.
Thank you. Phil, same question.
Yes, so it is somewhat of a loaded question because when you look at total rewards, it's not just a salary increase or longevity pay, there's other things that are involved. Tuition reimbursement, healthcare, I mean, these are big expenses that, so we're not, the question, I, I know it's a debate, but there's a lot more that goes into it. Everything equal, though, I think considering where the market is, where the labor market is, and also with inflation and the cost of living, I think looking at a contract for one to four, again, this is just the information that you gave me, is very reasonable, very reasonable. So I would be in favor of that, assuming all the things are, are equal.
Thank you. So we are running out of time, so I want to make sure you have enough time for your two-minute closing statements. During the draw, Matt McWayne drew the first closing statement, so we'll start with you and then move on with Jerry, so on and so forth. So those, these are two minutes long and Matt, you can go right ahead.
Yeah, well, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, thank you so much. Thank you to the other candidates, Mr. Gahn, you know, as well. You know, there's an important decision that stands 19 days away, I think, here, you know, to, you will have selected two candidates here to represent you after May 16th, moving forward onto November. You know, for me, you know, and the reason that I'm running, you know, is that this is my home, you know? I, I've had the opportunity to live in a lot of different places, you know, throughout my life. But my wife and I chose to move back here, to be here, to raise our family here. Again, we have a four-year-old and a one-year-old here, you know, we want to be able to raise them in this environment, raise them in this atmosphere, you know? I want them to feel the things that I felt growing up in this area, right? Blue collar mentality, chip on your shoulder, bring your lunch pail, go to work every single day type attitude. This area is special, you know? I think something great is going on right now in Lackawanna County here, you know? I think change is a good thing. Again, I thank you so much for, for your time tonight, it's been a pleasure being here. And, you know, guys, Mike, Jerry, Mr. Robson, and obviously Bill's not here, best of luck moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry, we'll hear from you next.
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you. Yeah, it's, and Matt's right, it's, it is a great place to live. I'm not happy my children have, have had to move away, but I think they'll come back. We do have a lot of great opportunity and it is getting better, it's getting progressively better. We have a train coming. Lackawanna County was very instrumental in that, along with the federal government and the state. It was difficult to do some of those things. I've been a part of that since the very beginning of it. The new Secretary of Transportation is someone that was a state rep in part of Lackawanna County, he's from Luzerne, Mike Carroll, does a great job, but he's a close friend. And you pick up the phone and, "Mike, we need to get this done," and he does. It's, there's, there's, there's a lot of, I have the knowledge, I have the experience, I have the good judgment. I go to work every day. We never shut down during the course of the pandemic. Other governments did. City Hall shut down in Scranton. School district had a shutdown. Lackawanna County didn't. We went to work the very next day and we continue to go to work every single day. This is a great area and the work ethic is phenomenal. And we have a lot of good opportunity here and it's only going to continue to get better. Our park system is by far amongst the best. And, and that's getting better and we work at that on a regular basis. It's just, it's just a good thing. Thank you.
Yes, so first of all, I, I'd like to congratulate Bill Gahn for, I mean, a tremendous, the timing is unbelievable, but the, I hope everybody's healthy and I wish you were here because we had a good discussion. I think debates are good, I think it really gives a chance for people to, to nuance some of the issues. You know, you come in with a certain idea and you hear different ideas and maybe some of you may have come, you know, left, are going to leave here with a different mindset. Maybe not. But I am proud to live in Lackawanna County. I actually moved out to, to do consulting and I came back and I love Lackawanna County and we have a, a lot of opportunity. I think I possess the experience, the skills, the passion and the commitment to take Lackawanna County to the next level. Jerry has done a tremendous job, tackled some really tough issues during tough times. I think I can carry the torch. Because the things that we really have to focus on, which are, I think, three, one is the local health department that has to succeed because it could, it can provide so much value to so many people and draw costs out of a very complex and costly system. The second thing is the reassessment. It's been 60 years. And what happens when you don't have assessments is you have inequities, things get costly. Evington Heights, just, we had to settle, and I hate doing this, but settle a, a, a legal thing over poor assessments. And that's taking money away from public school students, whether it's a teacher or a social worker or a thousand laptops. So we really need to get this going. And then from there, I do pledge to do what is the best practice for reassessment, is doing a reassessment every three to four years. Because it really hurts everybody when the values are out of whack. It's a recursive problem. And finally, the prison. I really think for $34 million, our recidivism rate should definitely be reduced and that's not what, that's not what's, what's happening. So for $34 million, we really need to focus on business process reengineering and drawing that money or the savings out of the waste in the prison and apply it to other areas like IT. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got you.
Mike, go ahead.
I would like to also thank Mr. and Mrs. Gahn. It's a great night for him and his wife and his family. I too, I sound like almost everyone here. I, I love Lackawanna County. I love Dixon City. I love where I, I am. I've been here all my life. I have, I have two children that will be graduating, one from Penn State and another from Marywood this year. I have my son up there who graduated from Penn State last year. Where are they going? They're staying here because they love the area too. They're working here. They're, they're our future. I've been working probably, I don't want to say how long, between council again and, and the planning commission. And these positions are not paid positions. Counsel, pardon me, council is, because I do make a lot of money with council, I get about $30 a week. And that really helps the family. What I, I, I'm hoping to do is to keep on moving forward with all the development that we've showed in Dixon City. We have much more coming in. I guarantee you, I'll be there, I'll be in front of that desk every day, I'll be on the phone with developers, I'll be on the phone with the engineers, I'll be sitting in the conference room with these people. And I guarantee you, we're going to do this for everyone, not Dixon City alone, not Dunmore, not Scranton, but this is for Lackawanna County. We're going to build it up. And I guarantee you, it won't be like before where they, they put money in for different developments and they keep, keep on losing the money.
Thank you. We'd like to thank the candidates for giving up their time to engage with the voters. And this will conclude our event for the evening, but we would like for you to remember a few important dates. The last day to register to vote in the May 16th primary is May 1st. The last day to apply for a mail-in ballot is May 9th. The deadline to return your voted absentee or mail-in ballot is 8:00 PM on May 16th. Voting in person at your assigned polling place occurs on May 16th between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Thank you for watching this program, co-sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County and the University of Scranton's Center for Ethics and Excellence in Public Service. Have a great evening.
Thank you. [applause][1768.32]